To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all board members are present. There are no sit-ups in comments. And we'll go on to board member committee reports. We'll start with Chad.
I have nothing to report.
John?
I attended the MSBA Officers Training Workshop on Saturday.
I have nothing to report.
I have agenda planning and I just wanted to say thank you Emily for the school board spotlight you did on Facebook. They were really nice.
Nothing?
Just agenda planning.
Nothing?
Okay. All right, we do not have a student council rep tonight. Superintendent's report.
Tomorrow is the end of second try in our district and Thursday and Friday we'll have grading and staff development days. So that's a huge accomplishment, means that two-thirds of the school year is completed and our students are working hard to get their last projects and everything in. Kind of a stressful time for them. So much needed time off for them. I'm excited to have the opportunity to address all of our team members on Friday. As we've started to call it our state of the district, I guess that's kind of in line with the State of the Union. But there's some key messaging that I really hope to get across to our team members. Some of the things that are weighing heavily on my mind that I just want the board to know, if you are, you know, paying attention to across our state and across our country with different issues that school districts are working through as it relates to race and discrimination and those kinds of things that literally are, I think, tearing communities apart. And although we've done quite a bit of work in our district and we have been implementing new strategies and actions, my message to our staff will be that we need to do more and we need to move faster to create an environment where all of our students, and I just want to coin the word "all" because that is synonymous with the word "every," which the word "every" is every letter is capitalized, that our mission, every student is prepared to succeed in an ever-changing world. And it's really important that we have, that we're an organization and an institution for student learning, but there has to be certain conditions for learning to occur, certain prerequisites. And that's why we focus a lot on climate and culture, and that's one of our big rocks, right? But within that big rock of climate and culture is a focus to make sure that there is no room for hate and there is no room for discrimination and there's no room for racism and there's no room for that in our system. Every student deserves the right, has the right, in our system to come to school and learn. And nobody has the right to infringe upon that. And that's, there's going to be some key messaging that I want to just make sure that our staff knows, that word "every," we need to continue to remember that and that needs to be a focal point in every single thing that we do. We are an institution of learning, but we also know, and we've all been students because we've, and we've sat in that chair, you can't learn if you don't feel safe and if you don't feel respected, I don't think. So it's like, it's really a focus on that. You know, some other things that I'm going to share with them about is just the state of our budget. I think that as we've been trying to brief our team members and just continue to educate them on the status of our budget, I think that's helpful. We're thankful that, because of the great work of our school board and other folks on our team and Michelle, that we've been able to have another year where we're not having big reductions or, and we're not going like this, right? We're just kind of like this. And that's how we want to be and make these minor adjustments every year. There's certain challenges that are on the horizon that we need to share so people are aware of and we're transparent. And that has to do with some of the stimulus dollars leaving and not being available anymore. And then just some other items. So some other pieces I'm going to share with them is just issues related to the land. I want the board to know that we're still moving with that. I've shared a draft of a purchase agreement. I did get some feedback today from our attorney on that, which I sent to the developer and their attorney. So there's going to be some back and forth on the legal side of that. So it might not move quite as quickly as I'd like to see. Other things that our teachers will be working on over the next few days is lots of work related to curriculum design and embedding that, and writing curriculum and documenting it into Atlas Rubicon, which is our standardized process for curriculum to be documented and accessible across our district. So those are just a few high-level thoughts I wanted to share with you. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. Thank you.
Any other questions, Deb?
What time is your talk?
I think 11:15-ish. It'll be, it'll be virtual.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Deb, seconded by Jim. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. I'll entertain a motion to discuss an act on previous board meeting minutes from 2:15:22.
Second.
Motion made by Chad.
Second.
Seconded by John. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Jim.
Second.
Seconded by Eric Strandberg. Any discussion?
The field trip, is that a school?
We're just going to ask the same thing.
Is that a school?
Well, it's run through community ed.
Okay.
So, you know, yes and no.
Is this a student thing or is it just?
We have before.
Yeah.
Don't they still fill out the 610 form? From policy 610?
Yeah. Because it runs through our community ed, we still have to approve it.
And that means they have to fill out the form, which isn't in here.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay. I thought we had changed that where the, where I was able to sign off on that as superintendent.
I mean, the form is still in the policy. Maybe I need to go to policy.
All right, well, that's why, I would suggest we pull that out and then we redo that and bring that back.
Will? Can I actually interject something? This field trip was approved back in 2019 and this is just resigning it because they had to cancel for COVID. I don't know if that matters, but I thought I'd let you know.
Thank you Emily for bringing that back to our attention. So yes.
So form then?
Yeah. Sorry for the confusion.
Yeah, I don't think we should pull it either because the last day for this tour fee is tomorrow.
Oh. So I have another question then. So if, I mean, this was, I mean, approved in 2019, has anything changed as far as like chaperones and, so I think on that form it talks about all that. So I was just curious if any of those details have changed or if it's going to be exactly the same.
As far as I know, it's all the same.
So anybody can go in this?
It's run through community ed.
Yeah, you just have to sign up for the classes. It's a class through community ed essentially. It's just a expensive class.
Right.
Why would we need chaperones if adults are going?
I thought this was the trips that go through the middle school. Because, you know, the middle school normally runs a couple trips every year to different areas.
This is the one that runs through community ed that?
Yeah.
That?
It usually, it seems like it's middle school teachers a lot.
Yeah, I don't think it's open to, like, true community members. It's designed for students.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
It's just run through community?
Yeah, the funding side of it runs through community ed so that?
Facilitates through community.
Yeah, and honestly, I'm not super familiar with it. As all of the years that I've been here, we've bounced through COVID and it's been delayed. And it's been my understanding that this is something that the district was doing through community ed, like literally every single year for the last many years.
There was chaperones that are run through community ed? Because the kids go through that other program through the school. We didn't pay anything through community ed. When Luke was signed up to go to San Francisco through the middle school, it went through a program. And there was nothing with community ed then.
Can I interject here?
Yes.
Can I speak?
Yes.
It, it's a twofold thing. We are using an outside company, but they are coordinating with Princeton Public Schools Community Education. So we have an agreement with them that indicates that we will supply a teacher and we have chaperones and that kind of stuff. We also get separate permission slips that are just school, that are school-related. So it's kind of a twofold thing, but we have always gone through a secondary company that does these trips. We've gone overseas, we've gone to Washington DC. We've gone numerous places since I've been here in Princeton and we have always used a company because that's what they do and they're good at it.
Yeah, explore America.
Well, if the board has, it sounds like the board is really, has a lot of curiosity around this. I mean, if you wanted, I could bring the people that do this to a future board meeting. They could present to you on how this works. You know, we do have a couple of teachers in our district that have yearly kind of been spearheading some of this.
Yeah, it's normally John.
John Steinbrecher.
And then Steinbrecher. It's been normally that history section over at the middle school, teachers that I've been familiar with.
Yeah, and they're just following the policy 610, which basically states that they got to list the nature of it, the group, age groups, number of, if it's conducted outside of our school days. It's subcontracted through a secondary party for travel and then it's set up through community ed for financial purposes.
I noticed.
They are following policy, what we have current policy.
Well, I noticed they only listed two days on their itinerary, but there's going to be gone for five, right? So I thought there was. Maybe it's probably on that form.
It's probably more on there.
On the form, yeah. There's probably on the form because if it was submitted.
The form, the form was submitted.
Yeah, so it's probably there.
So the dates and all of that are here. So.
We're good.
From the fifth to the ninth of June. Five traveling days, 35 students. John and Melissa are chaperones and seventh to ninth grade students.
So can I call the question?
Yes.
I call the question.
All right. Let's see, we are ready to take a vote on approving the consent, consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, now we move down to information. There's no action. I'll 10A the board goals and there's an attachment there that goes with our, our goal of communication. That seemed to be what a lot of the discussion was. And Ben put these ideas together as a point of discussion to move that forward a little bit, that discussion about board communication. And Ben, if you have more?
Yeah, I just think that with any goal, I mean, the, I think the more important piece is the action steps and the strategies that we take to try and meet that goal. And I put together some thoughts as it relates to, you know, some things that we could consider. This isn't an all-inclusive list. We can add some things and certainly probably delete some things, some of these things the board might not be interested in. For example, you know, one of the pieces would be to possibly do a book study as a board, just on some best practices and ideas associated with board governance and communication. That could be an idea, certainly would be a significant commitment from the board. But I did have a few books as ideas. Again, there could be better ones that just talk about governance and communication. Let's see. The second piece was following a book study with board discussion and definition of community engagement and what measurement, benchmarks, rubrics for successful engagement. So really define what, as a board, what we would consider, what we would like our community engagement to be, given the governance model that we are committed to. Talked about, establish key communicator networks. I've explained this maybe to a couple of you, but it's just, you know, formally identify a variety of perspectives within your trusted circles. Each of you, as board members, you are, you represent a constituency. You know, certainly we could all work to intentionally build your circle of, you know, people that you can hear from that, and pick their brain and those kinds of things. That's just one way that you would have that ability to do, to get input and communicate as board members. Intentionally talk about monthly district priorities, monthly themes and issues, briefs for the board. The next piece was establish, engage, a community feedback panel. That would be district-wide. Identify six issues on which to invite formal feedback throughout the year. Run a panel, surveys through rapid vote. If we were interested in doing this, I would suggest that we have maybe the public engagement committee sit through a presentation from this organization. It seemed very interesting to me. Basically, the concept is this. When we put out a survey, when we would like to hear about us, you know, get feedback on a certain topic, right? You know, basically, and the research would say, when you send that survey out, not everybody's going to fill it out, right? But who's going to fill it out? The ones that are super, like, passionate about that issue. But that not, might not, that might be a very small subset of your greater constituency and people that you represent, right? And that's, that's the tricky thing when you send surveys out about certain topics. You're going to get people that take it that really are passionate on one side or the other, but not, might not represent the whole. So with that being said, there's this process where you can identify, you can build like your network, if you will, kind of like your, I don't know, like, what's it like when you're, when you want to pitch something and you have a focus group, if you will? Right? So it's like you, you work to build a focus group of 100, 200, 300, as many people as you can, that represents a great cross-section of the district. So that when you have issues that you would like to test and get kind of the pulse of the community on, you know, whatever it might be. Let's say it is, you know, we're considering tiered busing, okay? Or we're considering, you know, whatever it might be. You could send that, you can have that, your test predetermined test group give you feedback on that. And there's some researches that says that that's more of an accurate representation of what, you know, most people think. All right? So if that's something, I wanted to bring that to the board as something that might be something we'd want to look at. It did seem like the organization that does this work tends to have, does it with lots of cities and municipalities and counties and things. They're in different states, they do it in, you know, school districts, but not a ton. But it did seem interesting. So I, you know, I don't know if that'd be something we'd want to learn more about. You can kind of ponder that. We talked about things that we can do and get back to more of our celebrations every month at board meetings. AP scholars, national merit, you know, we do some of that, national, state and national level awards, we do that. The art shows, we're doing that. High school council updates, we're doing that. Highlights, student volunteers, monthly curriculum direct updates. Basically doing, bringing like a board showcase in where we would invite different groups to come present to the board on, you know, whatever that topic might be. And we try and get real focused and deliberate on having, whether it be at one board meeting a month or two, you know, we can maybe just start with one. We say, okay, at the work session every month, we're going to do a board showcase. Or at the regular board meeting, we're going to do a board showcase. And we, and we, you know, that's just another way to, you know, have some community engagement. You know, I want, I also want the board to know that, you know, through this last year, you know, that we feel like communication is really important for what we do. But, but we did realize that through all of our work to get articles in the newspaper, all of our work to get things out electronically and utilize our websites and all of our social media platforms, we still weren't reaching the subset of our community that are not parents and they don't have, you know, they don't have children or, and they're not, they're not affiliated with our school district. And how can we reach them? And there, there really was a movement, if you will, to start reducing the number of mailings that go through the mail. And mostly because that's probably the most expensive way to communicate. And of course, we need to take that into consideration on how we, how we do business and finance and those kinds of things. But I am bringing forward a recommendation that I do think we should start up maybe two to three times a year mailer that would go home, right? To everybody in the district. And, you know, one of the first ones that, that we have pulled together, actually, the first part of it has the board's picture, you know, and just information about the school board, right? And again, that's just another way to get communications out to the community on the school board. You know, we can talk now, you can ponder, think about it, you know, certain things. And I also just want to reiterate, at least for me philosophically, I feel like as your superintendent, I do a tremendous amount of communication on your behalf, right? So, you know, when there is the articles in the newspaper and when there is the, you know, the different Tiger Times that go out, I think you guys, do you get, do we send you the Tiger Times? I hope we do, right?
Yeah.
You know, when we send that out to families and all of the social media kinds of posts and all of the information that we try and keep up to date on our website and all the videos that we make, you know, all of that is on behalf of the school board. So.
I really would like to look closer at that rapid vote idea. I think that might be a great way to, I mean, because we could also, I mean, you'd also include people who don't have children in the district, I mean, who are going to school.
Yeah.
You know, who are empty nesters.
I think that the, probably the hardest part of that is just getting, securing your network of people.
The group, yeah.
Who, you know, so it's like, okay, can you, can you sign on or make a commitment that you'd be part of this group? So when we send you something, you promise that you'll fill out these 10 questions, whatever it is. What do you got, Chad?
Yeah, is it, so is that, does rapid vote more like a survey monkey type platform?
Yeah, they have their own platform.
Sounds like Survey Monkey though?
It's, it's like electronic.
Okay.
Yep. It's, it's just basically you have your focus group that, that represents, should represent the whole.
Sure.
Do they help you find the different demographics as part of their fee or do we do that ourselves and then they just do the, the surveys?
They will assist and help and give us lots of recommendations, but you know, it's, it's going to be us, you know, sending the information out. And maybe it's, maybe that can be part of our mailer that goes home, part of our thing that goes out to parents. You know, we'd like, you'd like to have a nice network of people, right?
Is there a cost associated to use the service?
Yep. It's a few thousand dollars. And again, if, if the long-range planning committee, or it would probably be public engagement, public engagement would, I would sign up to, to listen to that with them if you were interested.
I like the idea of mailers for sure.
I think it's worth a look at.
Yeah, I think it's worth a look at as well. I also think under number six that we go back to having maybe grade levels or departments.
Department.
You know, you know, all of those, you know, maybe it's somebody from primary at a grade level. You know, if they would include students, that would be super, you know. A presentation, I know years and years ago we used to do that. And I, I think, I think that would be really beneficial.
I, I mean, if the board would like, I mean, some of the stuff I can get rolling right away.
I love that idea.
Yeah.
I love that idea.
Me even, didn't we just see that we're going to have the first graduate out of the academies?
Yep, the academy piece at the high school is a big, big deal. I just had an opportunity to present to the Chamber of Commerce today on our movement on the academies and we've built the infrastructure for that. And that's pretty impressive. You know, that's something that you, you know, when I'm sitting here thinking, I mean, there's probably hundreds of things that we're doing that are free, I mean, isn't that, that you might not have seen?
Yeah, you know, just having the, I guess it was the kids that went out that are actually doing internships or whatever, you know, having those kids come. I just, I just think there are a lot of opportunities. I'd be okay with every month. It doesn't have to be long for every meeting. It doesn't have to be long, but there's a lot we could showcase and I think that's a, would be a good way.
And it gets people here at our board meeting too, right?
Well, until their time is over and then they leave.
Yeah. But at least they came and they know where it's at and they know what it's, you know.
Kind of phase to. Any other discussion? Anybody interested in a book study? Or you want to think about that?
I like the idea. I just don't have the time to read it right now, but you know, probably this summer I believe.
We could get it on a podcast or something, though.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
This, I hate to say this, but I won't have any time to read, to read this summer. With high school graduation, graduation parties, getting a kid ready for college, getting them to college, vacations. I mean, this, a book study would be better in the dead of winter, you know?
Well, that's, the book study idea is always Well, that's, the book study idea is always something that's gonna be there.
I know how that sounds when a school board member says, I don't like, I can't read, so. I mean, I can read, but I just, maybe we could schedule it, not during the summer.
Audiobooks while you're on the tractor, you know what I mean?
Yeah, audiobooks is commuting.
Yeah. Why don't you do audiobook?
Sure.
Get the Cliff Notes.
Yeah. Well, the, you know.
They're fairly short, I looked at them too, they're fairly short.
Yeah.
I do audiobooks a lot, it's easier.
I don't, I don't, or maybe if someone's interested, I know, we could do a subgroup and then.
Could do a subgroup.
Like, what are some possibilities for books?
Well, I mean, we, we threw some ideas here that was related to governance and communication, right? But I don't wanna limit us to that, like, maybe, right? We wanna pick, I, earlier I was talking about, about equity and, or, or learning or reading or, you know, whatever it might be, leadership. Maybe we, we read a book on leadership. You know, we could, there's a, there'll be a lot more probably riveting books on leadership, in my opinion, than maybe some of the other things that would be common amongst all of us.
Or like a major issue facing our district.
Yeah. I mean, that's the thing, I was, is, is we don't need to limit it to, you know, governance. I would say that it would be in our best interest to have something that is aligned with our mission and our continuous improvement plan. You know, under climate culture, social emotional learning, right? I mean, that's a big one, with the, the customer service component, right? There's, I, we read one, a book about Disneyland as a, as a, as a admin team right off the bat, right? I mean, I might even gave you a copy of that, I'm not sure. But, I mean, there's, you can go through the list. And, and, well, if you wanna read things on curriculum design, some of the Marzano stuff, I mean, there's plenty.
Please.
But, you know, in, in, in general.
We're talking riveting.
It, 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 well.
Are we trying to get us to sign up for this book?
I, I personally, some of my favorite things to read are leadership, you know. And to me, like, great leaders, I don't know, coaches or whatever, I mean, there's some good ones out there. There's a, there's a person by the name of John Gordon that I try and read all of his stuff.
You mean the baseball, baseball announcer?
No, not, no, no.
I didn't think so.
And I, I'd probably just for later discussion, I'd, it would be interesting to have more information about developing your own communicator, communicator network. Like, how do you go about finding that inner circle and what, I mean, our, how do you keep it? Our, I don't know, but I, I think that would be interesting to, I think the more.
Yeah, right.
The more that we can do to be more out there without delving into the work you do or the admin, but to be more, I, I mean, I think those school board spotlights were a great opportunity to, to show the board. I mean, more and more of those kinds of things.
I didn't see those.
They're on our Facebook page.
Your picture.
Yeah. You're working on.
I remember sending the stuff in, but I never saw it.
Yeah, it was on the.
I didn't know if it happened or not.
It should still be on the Facebook page.
I could try to send a picture. Oh, well.
So, I.
Well, you can still send us a picture, we'll put it on late.
Yeah.
See, now you know.
Yeah.
Late entry.
Get one of your police uniforms.
Let me here, I'll look at, look one up here.
Do you have more discussion about that or do you have enough information to go from here?
Well, I think there's a few things on here that are probably line up. Emily, are you listening?
Yeah, I'm here.
Can you write a note for me to line up a, a meeting with our public engagement and that company? So we'll, we'll get that on the books.
Yep.
And then, and then we'll talk about how we wanna get a calendar going for our, our board showcases. So we'll start with that right off the bat. And then, I do think that every couple of months or every quarterly or something, we probably should talk about our goals, how are we doing, have we made any progress? Those kinds of things.
Well, I think if you also, if you, other boards or other situations where you see things in other districts that boards are doing.
Yeah.
Bring them, bring them our direction.
And, and that's why I know some of you do the coffee and conversation with the Minnesota School Boards Association. Some of our training, when we go to different seminars and things, you know, maybe we can seek out, you know, things like that to learn from boards.
I think number three is pretty, pretty key too, 'cause just, just because if we do decide, or when we do decide to go out for another referendum, I think it'd be, you know, great to have that identified and, and at least in a, some kind of a shared database where, you know, we, we can have access to what that community looks like and we can reach out to them.
Well, again, you know, you are each elected officials that represent our community to, to effectively meet our mission to run our school district, right? And you, you know, it's good for you to try and have as, as good of a pulse of the community as you can. And the thing that I learned a long time ago as superintendent, I'm sure that you've all learned too, either the easy way or the hard way, is one angry person that's in your ear about one thing does not represent what everybody thinks, right? And I think that's just, and, and you will hear, we're always gonna hear from that, right? Hopefully less, but we need to find good ways to get an accurate representation of what the pulse of the community is and what they want and need from their schools. But at the end of the day, I will always remind us that we are here for the kids, students. We have thirty-five hundred students that we're here to make a difference in their lives, right?
Yeah.
So maybe something more to think about in that area would be a way for us to have more student voice.
Yes.
In our ear or.
Or find a way to utilize our, our.
Student rep a little bit more.
Student rep differently or I think that would be a, I mean, I think that'd be a huge step in.
I'm glad you brought that up because that's a, that's a major thing right now. Talking about a book study, I'm reading a book right now, it's called Student Voice. So, yeah, I do think we need to capture more student thoughts. Good?
Having them come on the showcase thing is one way to do that. But you're, you're only gonna hear the positives, probably not, that might get down in the nitty-gritty, but anyway. I think that's also another piece that could go to that.
I do want the board to know that I have now pretty much monthly been meeting a group of twenty to thirty high school students. We call it the Superintendent Advisory Group. And it's one of the more enjoyable things that I do. And we are very brutally honest with each other about the issues that we are facing in schools.
Do you bring those to the board, the, the students' concerns? Would that be possible?
Sure, I mean, we talk about, we talk about lunch.
No, no, but I mean, you know, if there are concerns that, that are really pressing, would it be okay to include us in, I don't know, what, what's being discussed, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm happy to, maybe I can put those out in my tiger notes, but some of the things that you hear from me are, are a representation of things that, that I, that I think are important. And I get a lot of that is based upon running it through a filter and things that I hear from the students. You've, you've heard from me talk about, when I started today, I talked about having an environment that is safe and respectful, free of bias, discrimination and racism. I talked to the kids about that.
Do the kids, do the kids have opinions? Do they see a lot of things that, that are upsetting or that they think that are real issues in the school?
Yeah.
I mean.
They, they do. They, they, they wanna be able to walk through the hall and not hear a knucklehead say some disparaging homophobic comment. Or some, and, and the thing is that, that is tricky is that, and we're all students, it, you know, students tend not to say things inappropriate when there's an adult around. So it's like, the, you know, those are things that we talk about. Okay, how can we, how can we improve our environment to have it more safe and respectful for everybody? Right? Our kids want to be in a safe and respectful environment. Now, that, and that doesn't mean that it's a, it's a horrible place, it's not, right? But they also see the room for improvement. They see the world that we live in, they see the anger and the polarization. And they wanna talk about stuff and they know that people don't want them to talk about stuff. You know, it, it, yeah, we have really good discussions. But I know that, you know, that's a group of twenty to thirty students. And, and I'm also aware that that's not a, that's not a perfect representation of, of the student body either. Right? Those are students that choose to wanna talk to the superintendent. Well, that's not everybody. You know, and we talk about, there's certain things that, you know, we've, we've already made some, some small improvements on, you know, with, with lunch stuff, with the parking lot safety at the high school. Is it, is something that we've talked extensively about, is, you know, traffic flow, right? And the fact where, you know, and this is straight from the students, where sometimes the adults, adults coming to pick up their child aren't so kind in the parking lot towards the kids. You know, these are all things that we, that we talk about, right? So, I don't know, I listen, I talk, we, we're just gonna continue to do that.
All right. We'll move on to the first ring of policy and Don, if you'd like to go over that.
Well, there's the summer changes in the academic and recognition programs and memorials. What's highlighted in green is what Barb had brought forward for us to change in those policies from the high school level. The extracurricular transportation, that was something that we had talked about previously at the board meeting and Jason brought it forward, so that was pretty much straightforward from what we had heard from Jason's presentation. The other thing that I just wanna touch base quickly is Ben had handed out to us Equity Lens Circle of Reflection, that we should see all these go in circles for all of our policies that we included. So that was something that Ben had presented to us as well.
Ten C, are there any questions for Don? Is just the final of the calendar that we approved, I think, last month?
Yeah, the only additional things that are on there is actually identifying the two elementary conference days. And then e-learning days for six to twelve. And that's on February twenty-first and October twenty-fourth.
Is that the first time that you've done e-learning days for those other conferences?
Uh, this year's, we did it this year. It seemed to go well. People seemed to go well, of course, then we ended up having a snow day anyway, so, so it was a little tricky, but it worked. And, yeah, we wanna make sure we identified it on the calendar so that people could plan and know that their elementary student was here on that day.
And, and then the middle school, high school has e-learning that day.
Yeah, yeah.
So no additions to the agenda? Future meetings are listed there and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Eric Stranberg. Second by Don, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Q. Yes, you are.
Oh, well, okay. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Yep. It's Chad's chair.
Thanks for coming.
And myself.
Thanks for being here.